All right, it's 6:01 and we have quorum. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Owen.
Here.
Pew.
Present.
Rodriguez. Rogers.
Present.
Sexton. Smith. Store.
Present.
Straub.
Yes.
Taylor.
Here.
Thorson.
Here.
Vantage Thirana.
Here.
Wilson. Covert.
Present.
Esri.
Here.
Farney.
Here.
Fortato. Greer. Hanauer Friedman.
Here.
Locke.
Here.
Laxton.
Here.
Michaels.
Present.
Carter.
Would note that Ms. Fortato has just walked in. All right. Can I get an approval of the agenda? Motion for approval of the agenda. Vantage Thirana and Straub. Any discussion, Mr. Farney?
I'd like to make a motion to adjust the agenda, to renumber it so that we move Communications to item number four, New Business to number five, and then Public Participation to number six.
Having heard a motion, I am going to hand, and a second, I'm going to hand this over to Ms. Carter, who is the chair. Per county.
Point of order.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Farney.
I'd like to make a motion to vacate the chair.
Point of order, I would like. So, point of order, per county board rules, which I have looked into unfortunately in the last couple of weeks, if the chair is unwilling to serve her duties at this time, the vice chair steps into the role. So I will do that for this meeting, and we do have, I don't know that we can do a motion to vacate the chair at this time. Administration, can we get any, we do have a motion and a second. Do we have guidance from administration on that?
If that's Robert's rules, and Chair Carter does not want to chair the meeting, I don't know why we wouldn't just do the procedure so that everything is smooth and we can move forward with the original plan of Chair Locke chairing the meeting.
Yeah, so for the meeting, I believe that's fine. I don't believe that we can have a whole board meeting to vacate, or a motion to vacate the chair at this time. I don't know.
That's exactly correct. It is for only this meeting.
Oh, for only this meeting?
That's what that motion is, in Robert's rules. That's why we have to do it in order to follow the rules.
Perfect. For this meeting only, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? The second was Ms. Michaels, or excuse me, it was Mr. Sexton, Mr. Sexton. So we have a motion to vacate the chair for this meeting. Is there any discussion? Ms. Rogers?
Is that necessary, or can we just move along?
We have to. It's just for this meeting, but yeah. Am I allowed to speak on this? It's discussion.
I ran here from work, okay, because this is a workday for me. I would like to proceed with Jen chairing this meeting. I had prior talked to Jen, and she said that she would be here in my absence. I ran from work to get here. I would like this to proceed. Thank you.
I'll add to the discussion that as I had planned to chair the meeting and had discussed with Ms. Carter how this would go, I support the motion to vacate the chair at this time for this meeting. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. So I will be the chair officially for this meeting. All right, now, losing track of where we were, we're at approval of the agenda, and there had been a motion and a second to change the agenda so that moving forward from here, it will be, we will have Communications from the board, New Business, and then Public Participation, and the reason for that being, just like we did with the nursing home situation, that we would like any public to be informed of why we're, we're having this meeting before said discussion. Is there any discussion about that motion? No discussion about that motion. All in favor of the motion to change the order of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, then moving forward, we now will have an approval of the new agenda. Any discussion of the new agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, moving on, we will go to Communications from the board. Are there any communications from the board? Mr. Pew.
Thank you. To our Muslim constituents, I want to say, may Allah, peace be upon his name, grant all of your wishes this Eid. Give me a little bit off here, but I'm going to say to my constituents, I find it odd that the FOIA requester knew exactly what to ask for and nothing else, and I'll leave that up to them. Thank you.
Ms. Carter?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Good evening, Champaign County Board Chair. I come before you this evening to state facts. I can't effectively advocate as an elected official with the motions attached solely pertaining to this resolution put forth before us here this evening. Every staff member has a complaint concerning the dysfunction of Brookins Building, the racial tension, they're overworked and underpaid. There hasn't been any urgency to remedy those problems or to address new staff in Executive Steve Summers' office that are making more money than the county employees that have been working here for years. I was contacted by former county board chair Wayne Williams last week. He said he would like to speak with me. I was busy with work and unavailable. Sunday, March 31st, at 7:16 PM, Michelle Jet contacted me via email asking me what time would I be at Brookins because her and Executive Steve Summers needed to discuss time-sensitive materials with me. I replied, 10 to 12. Monday morning at 9:50, I arrived at Brookins and noticed another car was sitting on the parking lot across from me. I seen there was a person inside. When I exited my vehicle and walked towards the Brookins Building, someone called my name. I looked back and it was Wayne Williams. I told him I was running in to meet with Executive Steve and Michelle Jet. I had no time to talk with him. Wayne Williams said that's why he's been trying to talk with me. He sent that anonymous FOIA request. I said, you did what? He said, oh, yeah. George think I forgot. My plan didn't work back in December trying to get the board to eliminate the auditors in the coroner's position, so I'm going to try again. I told Wayne I would talk to him later as I proceeded to walk into the building. He proceeded to say, Samantha, the auditor needs to go. Other counties are doing it. When I walked into office, Michelle and Steve presented information that was gathered from the FOIA requester. Okay? These are my concerns. Have any complaints been filed with the Illinois Department of Human Rights or the Illinois Department of Labor? Has any lawsuits been brought forth towards the county? I've seen so many in my community be falsely accused off of accusations. I'm not in any way discrediting those accusations. I simply stated that someone should investigate this matter that did not contain Executive Steve's office. Someone from the outside need to investigate this. This has been a long, ongoing battle that I have seen played out since I have been on the board for three years. I'm sick of it. Leah, if you ever send me another email like you sent me, there will, no.
This is beyond the bounds of communications. It's point of order.
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 Ms. Carter, this is beyond the bounds of communication, personal attacks.
This is outside of the, Robert rules of order, yeah, you have, first of all, point of order, point, point of order, by Robert's rules of order, you cannot personally attack other members of the board.
Ms. Carter, I would, you are out of order. You are out of order. Ms. Carter, you are out of order. Ms. Carter, please have a seat. Please have a seat, Ms. Carter. Please, please. Please refrain, the chair, the acting chair asked, please refrain from personal attacks of board members. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Can you turn your mic back on?
The accusers and Mr. Danos is both protected under the 14th Amendment Due Process Clause, meaning governing, government actors must follow certain procedures before they deprive a person of a protected, of a protected life, liberty, and property and interest, meaning legal matters should be resolved according to those established rules and principles, and both parties involved be treated fairly. Due process applies to both civil and criminal matters. Thank you for your listening ears. Champaign County Board, Madam Chair, Samantha Carter.
Are there any other communications from the board at this time? Ms. Rodriguez?
I just briefly want to state, for everybody watching at home who might have concerns after hearing that, just want to note a couple things. I think it is a good thing that county executive Steve Summers meets with members of the Republican Party. I think that's his job to meet with any county board member. That's his role. I also just want to highlight for everybody to know, Wayne is not an elected official at the county level. He has no role in the county. He has no say. We know that Wayne is certainly interested, an interested citizen, and vigilant, and likes to make his voice heard at the county level, but he does not have any authority here. I just wanted to highlight that for people. I just wanted to highlight that for people watching who might have been confused.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Are there any other communications from the board? All right, moving on at this time to new business. I would like to let the public know that we are having this meeting because a majority of the board asked Executive Summers to call a brief, or call a meeting to brief the board on matters contained in a specific FOIA request that was received last week. As a board and as a county, we want to ensure that all county employees work in an appropriate and healthy workplace. And without further ado, I would ask that the administration come forward to brief the board.
I'm not sure if you just want to jump in with questions. Everyone's had the documents since yesterday, so I think everyone's had a chance to read them.
I'd like to start with just some qualifying or clarification questions, just so we kind of get our terms straight, especially if people are watching from home. Could you tell us the importance of Munis software to the functions at the auditor's office?
Yeah, so Munis is our complete financial management system. All of the county expenditures and income, revenue, and expenses both go through the Munis system. All of the departments use the Munis system. It was implemented in the last two years. It's been a long process, but there is no money action happening that is not through Munis.
Okay, so just to put a fine point on it, how crucial of a tool is Munis to completing the single audit, for example? A key text that's put forward by the auditor's office?
You could not do the audit without the Munis information or accessing information out of Munis.
Okay, thank you. Also, I wanted to ask a question about Tyler training sessions. That was something that was mentioned throughout the documents. Could you tell us what those are and their value to the auditor's office?
So as part of the implementation of Tyler, we paid for them to provide remote, everything was pretty much online video trainings for all of the staff countywide, anyone that has any financial responsibility, because all of our departments have their own account clerks. So we had to train dozens of people on how to use a new financial system. In addition to other people having to have more intense training on how to use Tyler, Munis, Tyler is the same thing.
Thank you.
So there were months of multi-level trainings to get everyone in the county up to a functioning level of Tyler Munis. And we continue training today, to this day. The auditor's office offers monthly trainings on variety of topics for Tyler.
Thanks. And how significant would you say those training sessions are to the functioning of the auditor's office?
Attending the training sessions?
Yes, and that people are regularly informed on those functions, et cetera.
Well, the auditor's office is the, is our resource. So if anyone has a problem or a question about Tyler Munis, they go to the auditor's office. We have an email, help, you know, help at Munis, whatever. It goes to the auditor's office, they answer it. If anyone asks me a question, I don't know, I refer them to the auditor's office. If I have a question, I go to the auditor's office. So the auditor's office is our ground zero for knowing how to use Tyler Munis.
Okay, so they are your one, your first call, or anybody in the county's first call if they have a problem accessing this key resource or managing the county's finances?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. I have just one more question. Could you describe in general what the county's work from home policy is? Does that vary from department to department? I saw, for example, listed here at one point that designated work from home day was Monday. I just wanted to, what's the sense of that across departments and the auditor's office in particular?
It's absolutely department to department. Some departments can't do it at all because just all of their work is public-facing and interacting with people as they come in. Some offices, like the auditor's office, does not have that, so they can have a lot more flexibility, and that office can then determine if they want to use work from home and how they would allocate that kind of resource. So absolutely, department by department. And it is not widespread throughout the county. Very few offices and very few employees, I think, are working from home.
Okay, thank you. And I'm sorry, I just wanted to add one more, just very general question to kind of put a sense of the umbrella, I guess, of tonight and a sense of why the auditor's office exists. Could you just give a sense of the functions? What do we count on the auditor's office for, for the county? Why does it exist?
I think the auditor's office and the function of auditing exists to ensure there is no fraud, waste, or abuse of taxpayer money.
Ms. Michaels?
Yeah, if I can follow up on Ms. Rodriguez's question. We talked about working from home, and obviously, there are some documents that are sensitive to the county and certainly to every department. So I am concerned about what amount of work is being done from home and what that work is, because honestly, a lot of that should probably remain within the county, depending on what it is. You just really don't want a lot of sensitive information out there.
Yeah, I think that's a very reasonable concern. I'll just expand a little bit on Tyler Munis. It is a very comprehensive web-based program, so everything is in the program. So when we're auditing things, the transactions and all of the documentation, if done properly by the department that is submitting it, has submitted all the documentation into Tyler Munis, which again is accessed through a website. It does require a specific login per employee. We have two-factor authentication for all employees as a security measure. But, so it's not, I just don't want there to be an impression that there's like documentation physically going home with employees. That's not the situation.
Ms. Hannah Howard Freeman?
I'm wondering if you could speak a little bit about the difference in HR policy, for lack of a better term, between department heads who are elected officials and those who are not in terms of if you're receiving employee complaints about a supervisor, what happens if that person is an elected official versus what happens if that person is appointed or hired in a normal way?
So, I'll start with appointed. The majority, I think, all of the appointed officials technically fall under the department and supervision of the county executive. And we then have the ability to say, your personnel policies are the county personnel policies. So we have a pretty robust county personnel policy. It's multi-pages long. We just recently did a pretty major update to it, I think that was last year. So for the appointed department heads, that's in place and that's set. And that's pretty straightforward. It would be the same situation if an employee in an appointed department had a complaint about their supervisor. They would come to us, we would take the information, discuss the best way to look into the situation, and proceed from there. Again, there's a little bit more, I think, structure would probably be the word because that appointed department head has a supervisor, right, as the county executive? So there's that piece to that factor. On the other side, with the elected officials, they are independent entities. So they can opt to adopt the county personnel policy, but they are not required to. And they are not specifically required to have any personnel policies. So if they chose not to formally adopt the county policies and they didn't write their own policies, they just wouldn't have any personnel policies. So as you can imagine, complaints from any elected official department can get very messy very quickly because you have no structure in some situations to work off of. And then in addition to that, you throw in the component that an employee may be making a complaint about someone who essentially does not have a supervisor above them, and the executive's office and the board, for that matter, has no authority over that individual as well. So one of the duties in my job description is to serve as the county ethics officer. So what you end up seeing happen is what's in front of you. A complaint will come to me. As the ethics officer, I'm compelled to address it, I'll investigate it. Depending on what it is or what's happening, the state's attorney's office may be involved. I'll write up a report. Executive Summers has been very proactive about going directly to the elected official and having a conversation with them about the concerns and what's happening. And then that's really all, we have the authority or space to do anything with about it.
Can I just ask a follow-up? Sorry, so if the types of complaints that are included in this FOIA request were received by the county and it was not an elected official, what actions would the county take?
Fall under the policy guide that the board has put together.
Yeah, I mean, and depending on the severity of the issue, you know, there could be a variety of responses to that appointed official's employment.
Mr. Thoreslin?
To go back to the county personnel policy, do you, which elected official heads have not adopted the county policy?
So at this time, I have not been able to find concrete documentation of who has adopted the policy. I know that other departments, the sheriff's office has a very robust personnel policy. They contract with an outside entity that specifically knows how to write law enforcement-related personnel policy. So like, they have their own kind of situation. I believe the county clerk has a pretty robust personnel policy. They've taken the pieces that they like from the county one, and they've added the things that fit better for their department, and it works well in that situation. So it is on my list to figure that out more concretely. What's been happening as situations have come up, I've found out in that means or just, you know, experience with some departments, I've known what they have or have not had.
So just to follow up, is that something that we could learn about in a close amount of time? Whether they have their own or whether they've adopted the county?
Yeah, certainly.
Thank you.
Mr. Pugh?
Thank you. I'm a little bit confused because I talked to the, our HR specialist today, and it sounded like to me that persons who are not covered by a bargaining unit should actually be talking to her about complaints. It should be basically going, I was confused before she was actually there for Mr. Danos's unit. It would be going to the chief deputy auditor, possibly to him, and then to you, and then to Steve. But it sounded like from her, though, that complaints, they're non-bargaining units, should be going to her because that's her job. Am I wrong in that or confused here, or what's actually going on there?
Yeah, that's not what she said. She does not handle complaints. Again, as the county ethics officer, as long as that is in my actual job title, I will be handling the complaints, bargaining or non-bargaining.
Ms. Lachon?
Just a quick bank history clarification. I'm assuming we have county funds at all three of the banks that were listed?
Yes.
B C, Prospect, and First Bank. Is that information available through any other platform like Munis? Or would they have to be logged into the bank to get that information?
No, the bank accounts, to my knowledge, and I have never heard anything otherwise, the bank accounts are not connected to Munis.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Carter?
My question is, ethically, do you think it was right to tell Wayne to meet me on the parking lot at Brookins Monday morning after you emailed me to ask me what time I was going to be here? What other way did he know that I was going to be at Brookins, 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM? Do you follow your own ethics policies?
At this time, per the advice of Matt Bannock of the Civil Division, I ask that board members constrain conversation to the posted agenda items, which is the response to the FOIA request.
My apologies again, Vice Chair.
Any other questions for administration? Mr. Farney?
Got a couple of questions about Munis. In the Munis platform, are certain people authorized to do certain functions that other people are not? Do we know? Thinking back to the old AS400 system, the chief deputy auditor had more functions available than the elected auditor did. Is that the same situation in Munis?
Yeah, absolutely. So that is, I think, probably the most important feature of Munis is the customization of it. So not only can you limit what someone can do in a fund, but you can limit what funds they have access to. So you can, even within like a department, if you don't want someone to have access to all of the funds within a department, maybe they only can submit invoices to one specific fund. The auditor's office obviously has the most access because they are auditing everything, and when things need to be adjusted, that is the office that is doing the journal adjustments, the year-end cleanup, all of those functions. So their access is not comparable to anyone else because they have a much different level.
Okay. Do you know, does Munis create a paper trail of users and what actions they've done at different times?
So my understanding, and I did have to get up to speed on this quite quickly due to the FOIA, is the document in there, which is an activity log, is, it's not like login, but it's actually what piece in the Munis platform that person actively went to at that date and that time. So we have some pretty main ones. Vendor Central, which is all of our vendors. Account Central, which is like the actual accounts and the funds. Central Budget Entry is your budget for the year. So those are like the most popular ones. So you can see what piece, it's called a hub, what piece of the hub they're going to. But I don't, I would have to go back and ask about if there's more detailed information. I did not get that far.
So am I reading it correctly then on that Munis sheet that the elected auditor logged onto Munis 12 days during all of 2023 and thus far in 2024, eight days? That's the only actual dates that are shown on that printout?
From my understanding of the activity log and what it's showing, yes, I would agree with that.
Okay. A couple of other questions, not necessarily dealing with Munis, but more of a question on how we've responded to employee and HR-type issues. Have we afforded protection for whistleblower protections or any retribution that might come from this incident to the employees of the auditor's office?
We have.
Repeatedly.
Fantastic. Are there any union employees in the auditor's office at this time?
There are not.
Okay. I think I had... I think that's, I think that's all I have for right now. Thank you, appreciate it.
Ms. Rodriguez, since I've already had you, I'm going to get to Beth first and then you. Okay, Beth?
So curious, since we have, as a board, no official authority over elected officials, who's liable for any laws those elected officials may break in the course of their duties? Any like local or state or federal laws or...
If it's a legal issue, that would go...
Who's legally liable for that?
That would go through the state's attorney's office and the courts.
So we, Champaign County is the employer. The individual elected officials are not considered employers. So if there is legal action regarding discrimination, harassment, wrongful termination, and if you've been here long enough, you know we've had those situations happen. Those come to the county. The county is responsible for those situations. If we're talking about the individual actions of an elected official doing things that maybe are considered fraudulent or violations of specific statutes around their job and their job activities, my understanding would be that would go towards that person.
I just want to remind everybody that specific legal or personnel questions, that was fine, but if there's a specific legal or personnel question, they are best directed to the state's attorney's office. Now, Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you for that reminder. I get, so we are kind of tasked here with making sense of multiple 10 documents and kind of putting together a narrative about those inner heads and why it matters to the county. So to make some sense of that, I've been thinking quite a bit about the way that this information and the happenings, I guess, have had in two different levels. First, the county executive's office, and also the office of the auditor. So could you just walk us through, as the ethics officer, how does this impact your day? How much time have you dedicated to fielding these kind of complaints? How does it compare to other offices?
I mean, hours. It's, I gave up tracking that a long time ago. So not only, you know, is it addressing the complaints themselves and possibly the investigation, if there's warranted one, follow-up conversations, but there's also just the concept of providing emotional support... emotional support to the employees, which has been a significant part of this equation. Many whistleblower conversations, many conversations about troubleshooting, how they can get their work done. Many just listening to venting sessions. So I mean, it's been an extensive amount of time.
That sounds like emotional labor than also just putting out fires. Yep, okay. So to kind of put a, maybe a visual on it, considering all of the roles that your job requires and thinking about the percentages and, you know, if you're thinking about a pie chart and the way that it should look, how much time would you say you've associated with fielding these kind of complaints, if you could?
Overall, all offices? All offices, all complaints, all venting, all support. I would say it's probably taking between 30 and 45% of my time.
Okay. And just to underline again, you have no real recourse for elected officials?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So you kind of have to, you're in this hamster wheel, it sounds like?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. I'm all about the visuals. And then one final question here. I wanted to kind of get a sense, because you are receiving these complaints, and I said I wanted to get a sense of how this is affecting the executive's office, but then also the auditor's office. Could you describe your sense of how this is impacting the productiveness, the success, the basic functions of the auditor's office? These kind of complaints and emotional stress?
I think on a good day, it's a distraction. And on a bad day, it's a brick wall. I think that, from what I've seen from the people in that office, they are all very committed to their work, and they want to come in and do their job and go home. And there's a lot of interruptions. There's a lot of unnecessary issues to deal with. There's a lot of being pulled away from the work that they are tasked with doing and expected to do. And the auditor's office is, as it's supposed to be, I think, this is not a bad thing, it's a bottleneck, as it's supposed to be. Everything is supposed to run through that office from a financial perspective for verification. But that means then the office needs to be running very efficiently to keep everything moving. And I think that, from what I've seen, that would be very welcome by the employees.
Ms. Coward, I've been, I didn't see you, I apologize. Do you have a question?
That's okay. I'd like to know what's the order when an employee files a complaint against their employer? What steps do they go?
So it depends. It depends on if they're union or non-union. If they're union, you know, we're right back over to their steward, and we're working through the union to address it in that manner. If they're non-union, it depends on what the complaint is. If it's, you know, my boss is mean to me and I don't like the way they talk to me, then, you know, okay, well, let's go have some conversations and figure out how to remedy the situation. If it's, you know, someone said a racially motivated statement in front of me, it's a different process. That's much more, you know, severe at the end of the day. So it really depends on what the complaint is and who's involved in the complaint. So I know that's not really like a full answer, but I can say that, like, for these things that you're looking at tonight, these are all things that, you know, I would say are on the elevated level of, this is what we're being told. We need to verify if this is accurate. So the majority of them involved an investigation, confirming the information, confirming the documentation if appropriate, that kind of situation. And then from there, I think almost all of these involved then going directly back to the auditor and having a conversation with him about the concern and how it's impacting the office.
Did the employees make Mr. Danos aware that they were having a problem with him?
That is my understanding that, yes, they have multiple times expressed concerns about the things in the documents that we've seen so far.
Because what I read, it seems like it's more personal than criminal. And I think that we need to have a separate investigation from here at the county to investigate and see if any criminal charges can be brought against Mr. Danos before we sit down here and judge him on our own, because I don't think that we can do anything, because I haven't seen anything really criminal in these papers that I've read.
Ms. Furtado, I'll get to you next. I believe you're next. Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry.
With regard to events that were criminal in nature, several of the interactions that I had with Mr. Danos involved issues that I don't think go to the level of criminal nature, but are of ethical concerns. And we attempted to address those issues on several occasions with the assistance of the state's attorney's office. In one of the situations, we did a investigation per the request of the state's attorney's office, followed their procedures, and then met with Mr. Danos afterwards to ask that he correct the situation.
Now, Ms. Furtado, sorry.
I think for me, as finance chair, I have a very close and specific to the duties that I understand have been granted to me as finance chair. I feel as if I have a responsibility to the taxpayers of this county to ensure that the financial functions of the county are being carried forward in a way that is professional, it is ethical, and is timely. We've had instances where, for example, Jamala mentioned to me one day that we, you know, we had invoices that had not been being paid in the courts. Right? We've, we've had, and I will definitely say this was not all the auditor's fault, although at the end of the day, putting the audit in on time is the function of that office. In 2021, we came a few seconds away from having all federal grants stopped. This year, we got a very harsh letter from the Supreme Court for the state of the audit from the circuit clerk's office. There's just, for me, the performance of the, and I have to admit, I like to give people the benefit of the doubt. Recently, if you follow the news, and the only issue that was brought up in Cankey Key County, their auditor and the board had a whole conversation about how many times that auditor was logging into the financial systems. So actually, I'm going to, I do have a question. It's actually not going to be directed at you for a change. I, I actually have had a job in my life where I interacted not with Munis, but a very, very similar system. I was a grant writer for six, for, in the Parks Department in Indianapolis many years, not six, I moved on, but four, something like that. As part of that job, I had a lot of different financial analysis I needed to do. I had, I worked with both our single audit and external audit, our single external audit, and we had a floor of internal auditors. My grants were perpetually under audit. I had to create financial reports. I had a very similar login to a system like this. Most of my access was read-only. I would say, and that was only a part of my job. I also had to write and manage and, you know, all of those grants. I would say on a daily basis, I probably logged into that system seven times in order to do the analysis that I needed to do. If I wanted to understand the financial picture of what I was working on, if I wanted to understand where something was in the process, what the change orders were on a particular issue, if somebody asked me a financial question, I had to be able to understand that system, and I logged in and used it at all, like, just daily, all the time. All of this concerns me. The Munis login, I'm just going to be blunt, it blows my mind. I don't understand how an auditor could be functional and not, there's five months in the months of February that our auditor did not interact with our financial system that contains all of our financial documents. I, I don't understand what you could do in that office without looking at this system. I just don't. I, it is mind-blowing to me. And for me, criminal issue, like, I don't, I don't think the issue that we as a board have to face, is there, is there anything criminal here? Do we have an auditor's office and an auditor that is doing the job that he was elected for? That we're paying him nearly six figures for? And that the public should expect? And is he doing it with the integrity that the public should expect? So I actually do have a question. We actually have two people here who've been auditor before. When you were auditor and you were in that role, we had a different system then. It wasn't Munis. Did you log into the system and use it on a regular basis? And if so, what kind of things, not as staff in the office, but as auditor, did you have to use the financial system for?
During my time as auditor, the nursing home was in crisis. I was logged into the AS400 system every day because we were having to go through and actually decide on a bill-by-bill basis, can we pay this bill? Do they have enough money in their checking account to pay this bill this week? Is our food service vendor going to shut us off if I don't move this bill to the top of the list? We were doing things like that on a daily basis. The management firm, forget their name, but Scavato's team, the guy, he would be sitting in my office a couple of times a week, where he'd bring over the stack of bills, and he would lobby for the ones he thought needed to get paid. And then we'd have the reality check as we went through and said, well, this is the amount of money we have, so we've got to try to hold people off. That was one of the functions that we did, I remember doing every day. The syst, I mean, the, the bank account logins, the auditor doesn't need to be doing that on a daily basis. That's the treasurer's function. But the accounting system, I would expect if, if you're in the office working, you would be logged into it and at least looking at something every once in a while to get some data. Does that help you?
I know my tenure was shorter than the other guys, but quite frankly, I logged into it not just daily, but quite often. Not just to get familiar with it, but also to use it and to also do my job as an auditor. In my financial background, mostly being in banking, we spot-check things. And quite honestly, I would spot-check things quite often or ask the ladies in the office quite often, what is this? How does this work? Why did this happen? So not just to catch something wrong, but to also make sure that things were running smoothly and they were running on target as they should on a daily basis. So if you're the auditor, you don't just check it once in a blue moon. Your job is to spot-check, check on a daily basis what is going on. Because our county as a whole has multitude of departments, multitude of accounts, that at any one time, somebody is generally asking a question about, hey, can we do this? Can we do that? Did we get this form? Did we not get this form? Hey, can you pay that for me? Well, wait a minute, you didn't get that to me on time. So it is a daily, hourly thing that you are in that system. I also dealt with the nursing home, which was, which was something else. But in the meantime, RPC was hot with a lot of things and a lot of ideas or payments that were going out for their grants or people that needed rent payments or people that needed utility payments. And so those needed to be looked at when the people would be paid for working in election. I had the clerk in my office, when are you going to pay him? What's going on? How quick can we get it out? So it was a lot of things. It isn't just one simple thing. You are for many departments in the entirety of the county. And therefore, on a daily basis, you are looking at many different departments and many different payables that are coming to you that may or may not need an exception, or you may need additional document. And your staff is asking you, what is that additional document that I need to get that transpired?
One other thing to add on to that is other elected officials, account clerks, they would have questions. And the philosophy while I was in office was, I would much rather they came to me and says, this is what we want to do. Farney, how do we get to there? And that required us being in the system and going, all right, we're looking at each of your individual lines. You got this, well, you're going to have to go to the board for this transfer. You may not like it, but this is the way you have to do it. Or you can transfer between these lines and helping them go through and understand the numbers that were there. While I was in office, my staff wanted me doing that. They wanted me talking to those folks because the staff was trying to do their job. The auditor's office, when, I think Michelle said it's a bottleneck? Yes, it is. They have so much work. And I'm sure it's still that way now. But they wanted to make sure, you know, the folks that were processing the payments, they needed to be able to do their jobs and not necessarily walking somebody else through it. So if we could chip in and help with that, we tried to.
Mr. Thorisland?
Yeah, while we're on this time, thank you both, speaking from your experience. I'm looking at the logs. We have 23 and we have 24 here. And there is a difference in the way it's listed here. If you look at the one that's 23 from January to December, it shows a log time and recent menu activity. I'm not sure what that is. But when you look at 2020 came on, let's say, and stayed on for X amount of hours or something. And I don't see that in 23. I don't know if that's something that is completely relevant. But if it's a thing where you were on the system and you logged in, let's say, on Tuesday, and you went home and it was just logged in until Friday, I don't know if that shows as a different, you know, listing, which is why I like the one that shows the date and the time in and the time out, because I think that's more telling. In general, though, this is, in my opinion, and I'm not an auditor, nor have I been one on TV, that's not a big list. And that's two years. And I would think that, you know, I have a system that logs the work that I do at the University of Illinois, and I'm on it all day long. And I'm only running a couple of different little things. I'm not running a county. And I'd hate to see what the login looks like for me, because it would be busy and it wouldn't take just one page to list. So, and then kind of go to Lorraine's point, and I appreciate what you said, Lorraine. There's a lot of stuff in here that maybe doesn't paint a wonderful picture of the best supervisor or boss. None of it raises to the level where I think that we need to, you know, call in the authorities. But I do think we need to do something about it. I do think we need to improve what's happening there in the office. And I think we need to, to work this out as quickly as possible and as smoothly as possible, because we need this office to function. And I don't want the blanket auditor's office and one individual to be blended together. We have a really good staff. And maybe we have friction there between the elected official and the staff. But the fact that the county is still running and standing and things are getting paid and things are happening means that the staff is doing good work in that office. And I really want them, in the end, it benefits all of us if we can just make this all work.
All right. Questions for administration at this time? Ms. Lachson?
Is there an umbrella county, county policy that covers what is downloaded or viewed on county computers, even if the county office hasn't adopted the personnel policy?
Yeah, actually, I believe it's referenced in the report around the images on the computer. There's actually an ordinance around technology use that is county-owned. So that would be the mechanism that you're talking about right now, Ordinance 652.
Ms. Carter, and then Mr. Farney.
Excuse me. Does Mr. Danos hold a state license?
In what, what kind of category are you thinking?
For his trade, his CPA, being a CPA? Does he hold a state license?
My understanding is he is a CPA. I believe that's a state license, but I think he would probably be better to answer that question.
Is it okay if I ask?
At this time,
At this time, we're, we're limiting to what's been publicly noticed.
Okay. My point was, anyone that holds a state license have a right to file a complaint against that license holder. Are you aware of that process happening?
I'm aware of that process being discussed, but no one being comfortable to move forward with it.
Feeling comfortable moving forward? I've had two county board members cry on me for absolutely no reason. Is this being fueled by emotions?
If that's your question, no. It's being fueled by the facts and the situation that the employees are currently under.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Farney?
Concerning the ordinance 652, the, the internet technol-, or the information technology policy, I remember when we used to onboard employees that they were given a packet of papers and I think they had to sign something with that. Do elected officials also have to sign that document? Or are they onboarded with anything like that?
I can't say that any elected officials have been onboarded while I've been here. I would have to go and ask someone who had been here when that happened and I can follow up on that.
And then as far as onboarding of employees goes, when they are given that packet, is a county HR person giving them that packet? Or in the case of the auditor's office, is the elected official or his designee onboarding them and giving them that, that packet?
So we, the executive, executives' office offers a new hire orientation meeting that we do strongly encourage all employees be required to attend, but a department can opt in or out of that.
Okay. And then I guess my other question is maybe for administration, maybe for Vice Chairlock, the legal questions that we may have that we're not going to bring up in this session on the advice of the state's attorney. Should I send my questions individually to him or are they supposed to go through someone? How should we handle that?
I believe at this time, all questions of a legal nature should go to Matt Bannack at the state attorney's office.
So I would just send my own question to him?
Yeah, individually.
Thank you.
Ms. Michaels?
Go ahead. Well, I just kind of want to complete my thought here with what Mr. Farney had said. And honestly, as I believe he was referring to like a code of conduct, which many employers have people sign, is called a code of conduct as an individual employee, not necessarily the elected official, but as an individual appoint, employee. And that certainly would say that you are to follow policy, common sense and courtesy within the office. That is the part that I fear the most reading this, is that the staff is concerned, maybe afraid, I'll say that word, to say something or do something. And that is something that I do not want to see the staff having retribution on them for with whatever comes of this. But I know there is a code of conduct that I believe that, actually, I think I even signed it. And certainly it has to do with IT and that information. And then going into that new chapter here, talking about IT and what Mr. Thoresland had spoke about is logging in, but also seeing what you're logging into. So you can be logged in for a day or two days or three days, but are you utilizing it? So that's my final comment.
Ms. Fortado?
I, I want to echo Board Member Michael's comments. I imagine if I was an employee in this office, I'd probably be watching this on YouTube. I've worked in offices. Though it's a very small office. Reading this, it's easy to figure out, to be blunt. To make this kind of complaint would be a very difficult thing to do. It would be something that you would have to think really seriously about. It would take an act of profound courage. Because I've seen firsthand the way that Mr. Danos interacts with people when his challenge, his authority or his expectations are challenging, challenged. It's uncomfortable. Frankly, sometimes it's a little bit scary.
Same feelings I have with Executive Steve.
Ms. Fortado has the floor.
And so I just want to say to the employees that filed this, if they are watching or if they watch this later, I just want to say that on the behalf of me, I'm just speaking on behalf of me, that I see you and I appreciate the courage that it took to do this.
Ms. Houtenhauer-Friedman?
Following along those lines as well in terms of concern for the employees in this office, obviously, this has now been made public. Is there, and I know you said that, you know, whistleblower protections are in place and all of that. What else can the county administration do at this point to both ensure a good working environment? Is there a way to transfer their reporting lines? Are there, are there actions that can be taken to ensure that they're able to continue to do their jobs?
So before I do that, I, I want to just back up real fast and clarify. On the Munis document, just to make sure we all have the exact same terminology, it's not a login list, it's an action list. So it's when someone is in Munis and doing something. With the first screen of Munis, you have dozens of options and you have to pick an option to get further to be able to do something. So I just, I want to make sure we're all very clear on, on what that document is. As to your question, I, I do not have any suggestions for that. The budget has been allocated. An elected official has statutory protections to direct and run their office as they see fit. And at this point, you, you couldn't really meddle in that mid-budget cycle. If we found ourselves in a situation at budget time, we could look at shifting the staff at that point. But at, at this point, if all of the staffing from the auditor on down to the accountants stayed the same, there's, there's not really anything that we could do to directly impact that working environment that I can think of.
Mr. Pugh?
Just a quick, two quick questions. Both these complaints, were they filed in February?
When you say both, what specific complaints?
Groupings of complaints? Correct, there's two different groupings of complaints.
I believe they both have dates on them.
Well, there's one at the top, there's kind of one at the end. I just wanted to make sure I got that correct. Yeah, it looks like maybe December 31st and the February 12th. May I can ask this question? I don't know, but I'm going to try. Some of these go back quite a few years. Did these people reach out at all in the last few years at all that you know of?
Well, I've been in this position since January of 2023 and have been communicating with the auditor staff probably from day one. So that's as far back as I can document for.
Did anybody else from that office, there's any complaints? It might go beyond what the FOIA request is. Now, the last year, has there been any other complaints that you know of? Or are these just basically it? It probably goes outside the.
Point of order, we are only discussing the FOIA request.
Yeah, per Matt Bannack, we only want to discuss what's contained within the FOIA and relevant. Thank you.
Dr. Stor?
Thank you. I've enjoyed hearing the questions and replies from my fellow colleagues on the board. Is the information on Munis available from any other source other than from login?
Tell me a little bit more about what kind of information you're talking about.
Hey, for example, you know, the financial information that, oh, can it be downloaded, shared? Or in, in some way so that, I mean, is Munis the only access to this financial information?
Yes. We have a few, I just, again, I want to make sure there's no concerns about lack of information. We have a few things that remain on the AS 400, like for example, our drainage districts. But those are really only the concern of the treasurer in terms of the side of our finances, that is, the county's revenue and the county's expenditures, that is all in, in Munis, except for our CARF, which is charged through Munis, but is balanced and monitored in a separate spreadsheet. Our, our capital asset replacement fund, sorry, which is just a very complicated fund.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Sorry, Dr. Stor.
Is the information that is the response for the FOIA, is the entire, is this the entire response? Or is there something that's not included?
In terms of the Munis activity?
No, I mean, is this kind, is what, is this document that we have constitute the reply that would be provided in, for the Freedom of Information request?
So what I sent you yesterday and what this document is here is exactly what I sent to the requester yesterday. I forwarded you my response to them.
Thank you.
Ms. Dr. Fortado, then Ms. Rodriguez?
I, I actually have one more point of clarification on an issue I don't believe we have discussed, and that was regarding the travel reimbursement. Can you, I mean, I, I believe I understand what happened from, from reading this. I want to, I just, what I guess I'd like to know is, was a travel reimbursement with an expense that did not occur submitted? And if so, like, like how was it submitted? And then what was the process? Like, can you walk me through that process to make sure that what happened is what I understand happened from these documents?
My best recollection, I had received some information from members, or excuse me, of, of folks that were on the staff of the, excuse me, just a second. Members of the auditor's staff approached me indicating that George Danos had submitted a claim for mileage reimbursement that they did not think fell within the parameters of the travel reimbursement code that the board has put together. I went and spoke with Mr. Danos with regard to that transaction and he indicated to me that he felt that he needed or deserved to get additional money to compensate he and his husband for the driving to and from, and then to and from again, a conference that I believe was in Bloomington. As there was no car left in Bloomington, I told him that I did not think it was appropriate that he should be reimbursed for a parking pass. Mr. Danos disagreed with me. He felt that he should receive those funds due to the amount of miles that they'd had to drive. I then said, well, let's, let's talk with the state's attorney's office. And we looped in a member of the state's attorney's staff. We discussed it with George. We both told George that we felt that that reimbursement was not one that should be reimbursed based on the situation. And at that point in time, George said that he would then not pursue the reimbursement.
From a technical standpoint, the reimbursement was in Munis, pending an auditor staff member approving it for the check to be cut.
So just for clarification, and that, that submission included parking?
Yes.
And as far as you understand, no parking occurred?
No, no car was left in Bloomington.
There was no receipt to document the parking expense either.
Okay. Thank you.
Emily?
Thanks. I want to pivot us to the, I guess, the nature of what's under new business here, and that is a response to this FOIA request, right? It's, yes, Michelle did issue a response to the FOIA request as appropriate, but this is under our new business. It is our response that we need to be determining here and we're now we're in. So as to that, as I explained as Chair of the Labor Committee, I, I want to offer at least one next step. I think, and as I do that, I want to dispel this notion that criminality is our concern here. So please keep an ear out for that. Overall, I think that this is both a financial issue. I also think that this is distinctly and meaningfully a labor issue. And I want to remind us, that is a part of the core functioning of our role at the county board. It is not to play a judge and jury. We're not concerned with criminality. If criminality were an issue, they would have already referred it to their authorities. That's not why we're here. We are here to support our staff. And questioning and going over and over again, they've got to be even more discouraged. I want to underline here that emotional experience from a labor perspective involves mental health and emotional well-being. And when you hear those terms, you should be thinking liability. That concerns this board. This is distinctly an issue that we need to respond to and shame on us if we don't. So I do think that this is something the Labor Committee should be responding to, and I know that Mr. Farney agrees with me. So I want to just indicate in the coming days, we will be organizing our own response to this. Our own committee meeting, I guess, to consider what to do about this. Thanks. So I want to open the conversation to, on matters pertinent to this particular issue, I want to open it up to, shifting to a consideration of our own response to this.
Before we do that, I had said that Ms. Rogers could speak after you. Jamala? And then, then we'll pivot back.
Okay. Thank you. Just for clarification for me. So it looks like the complaints are like a log, a timeline, and it was all submitted at once? Is that correct? Or were, did you receive them at different times and you just combined them?
No, those two distinct complaint documents were submitted in their entirety once each.
Okay. And then a follow-up question is, were you made aware of, I know you said you had communications with people since January of 2023. So had you already discussed these issues with people and they just put it on paper and in writing for you and submitted it or?
Yeah, every time they brought something to me, I was very clear that without an official written complaint, the most I can do is be a sympathetic ear. And that whenever they ever got to that point, if they ever got to the point that they wanted to do a written report, written complaint, I was, you know, here and capable to provide support and investigation to anything that was, you know, eligible for an investigation. So this is kind of the culmination of that repeated conversation of, I understand you're very upset. I understand that's not appropriate. If you, if you want action to be taken in any form, we need an official written complaint.
Sorry, just one more follow-up question. And so then after you received these two separate official complaints, did you then conduct an investigation?
So the majority of the items in the complaint are, as we've noted, personal behavior complaints. So there's really not anything to investigate in the majority of them. And we had already hit on the major topics of the images, the reimbursement and a termination issue. So I didn't, once I read the complaints, didn't have anything I felt at that point that we had not already looked into and investigated. And at that point, then, we had started the conversation, the executive eye of, at what point do we inform the board and how would we do that? And then we ended up here instead, so.
So did you have a conversation with George about these personal, like, issues with, that his employees were having with him? And see if he was willing to address it and change his behavior? Did that happen?
We did not get to that opportunity. I did not get to that opportunity.
There were some complaints that I received that I did go and speak directly with George about and asked him to remediate.
Are any of those, these complaints specifically, or you don't?
Actually, the one I'm thinking about involves a member of my department. So that's not included in that, no.
Ms. Michaels?
Real quick, adding on to what Ms. Rogers was talking about is, I read the FOIA and I read the inappropriate feelings that were received from the auditor to the staff and the language that was used and the pushing to have certain. and the language that was used and the pushing to have certain issues done. To me, that is also part of a concern with this policy code of conduct. And I just wanted that out in the public record today. Thank you.
So seeing no other comments at this time, but having told Ms. Rodriguez we would pivot back, we could pivot back to discussion now or we can pivot back to that during other business as the agenda is unclear enough that response could be the response from administration and then we have discussion after communications or after public participation. Or we can have the discussion now and then allow the public to participate. Feelings from the board in one way or the other on how to read the agenda? Ms. Strub?
I'd like to hear from any public who would like to speak before we move on. It's important to take our constituency into consideration.
So that's one way we could read the agenda? Does anybody see that we should do it a different way? Okay. Then we are done with new business and we are moving on to public participation. I have no slips. Would any members of the public wish to address the board at this time? Going once, going twice, sold, no public participation? Moving on to other business discussion. Any ideas? Anyone want to pivot back to Ms. Rodriguez? Ms. Laxton?
Just a quick reiteration that these are not union employees in this office, so we are their representation here and we need to be putting them at the forefront when we decide what, if anything, we can do at this point.
Ms. Michaels?
Very quickly, I'd like to see what the Labor Committee comes up with and what they bring back to the board. So that is your role as one of the subcommittees of the board. And so therefore, I leave that in your good hands.
Ms. Van Hesthe or not?
I'm curious as to whether or not we have the ability to pass some kind of resolution that states, should an elected official not come up with their own policy, then the policy of the county by default becomes the acting policy for that department?
No, we do not. I have looked into that previous to a variety of incidents and no.
So how would we go about getting something like that done if we can't?
You cannot tell elected officials how to run their office through resolution, through ordinance, through policy. It's just not how it works.
Mr. Farni, and then Ms. Carter, and then Dr. Fortado.
The reality is it would take a change in state legislation. And there's going to be a lot of elected officials that are going to lobby very hard against that.
Ms. Carter?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Concerns from all staff in this building have been said to me. I'm here Mondays and Tuesdays. I told the board this is what I would do as being Chair. I have heard an array of complaints and concerns. One I would like to bring up tonight about security. Staff don't feel secure in this building. My incident Monday, I don't feel secure coming into this building. So I would, someone, please look into some kind of cameras or security. It is a concern, not just for me, but other staff as well. Thank you.
Dr. Fortado?
As Chair of Finance, I appreciate that Labor is willing to take action and to help us work through that action. I also feel strongly that Finance has a role in this. The role of the Finance Committee of the Board is oversight. And regardless of, I've heard a lot of very frankly disturbing dismissal of what the employees shared. Regardless of what you think of what they shared, it clearly indicates a dysfunctional office. A dysfunctional office that is, and I would also argue, the performance of the office itself demonstrates that. And so we as a board, I think, just to be perfectly frank, need to act on that. And so I would like to offer, if there's, I am fine with Labor taking the lead, but I ask that it be robust, that it be specific, and that it be actionable. And if there is any way that the Finance Committee can support you in that work, I would be glad to do so. I think we can promise that.
Any other comments from the board? Mr. Pugh?
How do I phrase this? Does the county, of course, this would be totally optional with elected officials, have any kind of, is this the right word, remediation program at all? To work with anybody, staff, you know, staff members between themselves, supervisors with staff, anything like that at all?
Do you mean mediation?
Sorry, mediation.
Yeah.
Well, we have a growing HR department. And again, as the county ethics officer, I do a lot of mediation around issues between individuals. The HR generalist also does a lot of general training for people on how to better handle workplace interpersonal dynamics. We would love to have the capacity to implement a training program, but that is completely out of our reach in our current structure. We would need more people to implement something like that. And then, of course, when appropriate, we utilize the unions and the stewards to assist in any type of dialogue that could resolve a situation.
Okay, because I'm just asking because maybe I heard you wrong, but it sounded like there's a lot of issues there on these complaint forms. But they hadn't really be addressed with mediation with Mr. Danos yet. It sounded like from you, that has not been done. Is that correct or has that been tried?
I would say we, Steve particularly, has numerous conversations with the auditor on issues and behavior. And there's also a dynamic of, at the end of the day, there's little to no protection for those employees. So a lot of the conversations are them telling us what's bothering them and then saying, but I don't want you to get involved and don't say anything about it because it'll make it worse, so.
Okay.
Ms. Strub?
To that point, I would assume that with an elected official, any kind of mediation would have to be voluntary because elected officials don't even have to attend trainings that their staff does. Is that correct?
That would be correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Thorisler?
This is coming not as a suggestion for the whole board, but from me as a person and personal experience. I have gotten to the point in my career where I don't get to do work anymore. I get to tell other people to do work. And I have a couple of different groups that are all working very well together. And I will tell every elected official, you have these special protections. You have this privilege of being elected to an office. You have an office that you oversee with a staff that's in it. You are on some level the face of that, but you're also elevated by the people in your office. You will not be successful if the people that work with you, not under you, but with you, don't keep that office functioning properly. It's in your best interest, every elected official, not just the one we're talking about tonight, to do your very best possible job to be a wonderful, caring, good steward of all their work and to encourage them to do their best so that you all look good. And a lot of the things I see in this show me a group of people that are not functioning well together. Seeing what we see in the room tonight, I can see a group of people that don't function well together. All of us would benefit from everyone functioning much better together at all times. And I implore as a person to another person to do your very best, to do your best by the people that support you in that office so that we can talk about things like how to spend our ARPA money and how to run this county marginally in a profit and how we can take the best care of all the people that work for us and the people we're in charge of and not have special meetings on nights where I canceled an ELOC meeting and accidentally made this room free so that we could all be here tonight. So do your best to be your best. It's really important. And this kind of stuff that I see in here cannot continue. And I feel terrible for the people who were so brave to come forward and do this. I don't care what mechanism brought it up because we know when things are happening. We've heard about it. This is just sort of like, to be, you know, grossly graphic, the eruption of the pimple on this situation. And now we're dealing with the cleanup and I want it cleaned up.
I want to add that I welcome Labor and Finance working together to formulate a robust response. Our employees deserve to feel safe at work. The county and the taxpayers deserve all of our departments to be doing their best, all of them. And that includes our elected officials to be going in and actively performing their jobs and actively doing their best. So I welcome whatever response is crafted by your departments. Thank you. Ms. Fortado?
I wanted to mention, and I want to stick to the germane points of the agenda. But in conversation about this, from Finance Agenda to now, I found out, I guess, yesterday about addition. One of the things I always, like, when I see something like this, I like, I want to think about like the veracity of what I'm reading. And one of the things that is clearly demonstrated is the staff is questioning the judgment of the person in this office. And this, yesterday, and I have not had a chance to do so, but I will because I want to be as transparent with information that I have as possible. I became aware of a situation in which our current auditor intervened into a procurement process in a way that is incredibly disturbing to me as Finance Chair and my understanding of procurement. So what I will be doing is writing that up as a memo and sending it out to the entire board. I will not be at the Committee of the Whole next week. I apologize. This is, could not have come at a worse time for me in terms of my job. So I've only had so much time to be able to deal with this. But I will pass that memo on to Mr. Farni before I leave. And so you could have it at the Cow. But it specifically, I think, demonstrates the kind of thing that his staff are talking about. Something that is not included in here, but it is of that same kind of nature. And so I wanted to bring that up because I don't want anybody, I feel like people sometimes are like, you withheld information. And like, I actually try really, really hard to be transparent. And so that is, I just wanted to mention that. But that, I'll be giving you those specifics.
Ms. Laxton?
I don't know that you have this information yet as we've all just sat down tonight, but when could we expect, I guess, the next response or action from Labor and Finance on this process?
We're in the early stages of talking through what that response might look like. I think the first step is getting a meeting on the books in a way that gives the public proper notice. But I think we can say that something written will come to the board that we can then vote on.
Seeing no other comments from the board, going once, going twice, I call this meeting adjourned at 7:30 PM.